Courtney, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect.
Great. We might just be ready to call this meeting to order. We'll call it to order, then we can have a plan.
The flag, United States of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice of all.
Roll call, please. Mr. Prino.
Here.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Thorndyke. Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Nemec here. Okay, we've got five of the six. We have got a quorum. Uh, the governor has extended the gubernatorial proclamation once again until December ninth. So this meeting and the December meeting can all be held with remote attendance allowed. Uh, this evening, everyone is in the building. We do have an attendance, uh, attendee via remote, and that is our representative from Lauderbach and Alman, and will be with us to present the audit. Uh, so other than that, we will have voice votes where allowed. And the roll call vote will only be called upon on ordinances and financial situations. Uh, okay. Next item on the business is the minutes of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Nemec to approve the minutes of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any additions or corrections?
Is there a correction to be made on the allowance for the chief to have a the, uh, what do you call it? The two spots in the need to be two spots instead of the one?
Yes. Like, uh, on the minutes, we know that there's only a slot that we were speaking. If I recall, though, the conversation was for two. If we're at change, so.
What was that?
That's the idea. Instead of a slot, we need to, you know, word that, you know, that we will be looking for at least a minimum of two attendees.
Word candidates is plural, those.
I know, but, uh, it was kind of confusing because it says candidates, but then it says we were looking for ace spot. And I just wanted it to be clear that we were looking maximum on two.
Right.
So.
And I believe actually underwater sewer, which you probably, probably mentioned, Tony did a nice job of summarizing, I think, which probably mentioned at least that we're planning at this time designing the engineering to go down rainbow and if those residents to be required to hook up on at some point, but we were not going to acquire additional expense other than the um, initial plan is not to require them to pay for it, but to, um, just having had a hook-up fees is the current plan. Yeah, that Tony said. They make that clearer or not? Not clear.
I'm working on it. Give me a second.
The, 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 the design for one main project, I guess, include rain. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other changes to the minutes? If not, as amended, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. The ayes should so pass it. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, uh, before we go into the president's report, I'd like to take a, uh, motion to amend our agenda so that we have the audit presentation moved up to now.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Nemec, seconded by Harney to amend the agenda to bring the audit report up to the present time. Any comments, questions, or discussion on it? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Courtney, your floor is yours.
Great. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Um, as mentioned, my name is Courtney. I work with Lauderbach and Amen. I am the audit manager for the Village of Sleepy Hollow. Um, and I'm here to present the two thousand twenty-two audited financial statement. Um, I see all of you have a bound copy in front of you, so I will be starting with the copy with the logo on the front. Um, before I get started, though, I did want to say a huge thank you to Eugene and his team for all of their help in getting everything pulled together for the audit. Um, it really takes a lot of extra time outside of the scope of their regular job duties to prepare for us. Um, and it's truly a group effort, so we really appreciate all of their help in getting this pulled together this year. The purpose of an audit is for us to perform various tests and procedures on your financial statements to ultimately form an opinion. We did give the village an unmodified opinion. It's also known as a clean opinion. It is the highest opinion that we can give. It states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. I do want to touch on just a few key financial highlights. So the financial statements do start on page twenty-two. Um, so you'll pass through our, um, opinion, which I just mentioned, and you'll also pass through the M D N A, uh, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis, um, which is really a great place to start if you have any starting questions on the financial statements. Um, it's really financial information in non-financial terms with charts and graphs, and it really just provides the highlights. So if you don't read anything, that's definitely the place to look. So, um, ending that position this year of the village was about eight point nine million dollars at April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, of this total, about five point nine million was your net investment in capital assets. So this is the investment in your capital assets that are held by the village, uh, less any related accumulated depreciation. So it's the cost less accumulated depreciation. About five hundred nineteen thousand of this net position is restricted for motorfield tax purposes. Um, and the remaining amount is unrestricted in nature and can be used to meet the ongoing needs of the village. So that's about two point four million dollars in total. You'll see on page twenty-three, uh, both, I'm sorry, page twenty-five, you'll see, uh, that both governmental activities and business-type activities did increase this year, uh, two hundred ninety-five thousand and seventy-five thousand respectively. Uh, this was about a four percent increase from last year. Once we get past the entity-wide statements, we do have the fund level statements starting on page twenty-six, which detail out your general motor, fuel, and capital improvement funds. You'll notice that all of these funds did also have an increase this year. Specifically, the general fund had an increase in fund balance of about three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, resulting in an ending fund balance of about one million. And if you flip to page thirty, you'll see the details of the water and sewer fund, which also shows an increase this year. That was about seventy-five thousand dollars, resulting in an ending fund balance of about four million dollars. So overall, everything basically increased this year. Past the basic financial statements, we have the notes to the financial statements. It's really the meat and potatoes of the whole audit. Um, if there's any questions or any details of anything you may need to know, the notes to the financial statements are the place to be. Um, there isn't really anything specific that I want to point out here. I just want to let you know that that is really kind of what helps explain the financial statements that precede it. Uh, but the last piece of the audit report is required supplementary information, which is your budget to actual, starting on page fifty-two. So on page fifty-two, you'll see a detail of your budget to actual and your general fund. Um, so overall, you did budget for a deficit change, um, in your fund balance this year for the general fund. Um, but overall, you had an increase of the three forty, uh, three hundred forty-seven thousand, as mentioned. So you'll see the detail of motorfield tax followings, and then a little bit more of a deeper breakout of your general fund, um, and the remaining budget to actuals on those last few pages of the audit report. The other bound document you have in front of you, um, which does not have the logo on it, is your management letter. Um, this is just our recommendation of any policies, procedures, or anything else that may come up during the audit process that we want to make sure we communicate to management. Um, really, the biggest thing I want to touch on is one of the comments is related to a new Gatsby statement that's coming out. It's really just an FYI. Um, it's really nothing bad or negative on the village. Um, it's something that's required to be implemented at April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, so we'll work with Eugene and the village to get it, um, implemented as necessary, but it's nothing you really need to worry about. Um, it's just something that's required for us to disclose. Um, and then your motorfield tax fund and your water and sewer fund did have excess expenses over budget. Um, so that is something we also have to disclose, um, and something that would be, uh, good for you to look into, um, as you pull together your budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So with all of that being said, I know that that was a very brief overview, and I know Eugene, I think, is still handing out some management letters if anybody wanted to review them, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have, any comments on the audit process, um, questions, comments, concerns.
Any questions for Courtney? Anything signed? Think you did a fine job, Courtney. There are no questions, no concerns.
Wow. Well, I know sometimes questions come up after the fact, so if there is anything that, um, you do come up with, feel free to pass it along to Eugene. Um, he can get in touch with me if there's anything specific that you're looking for, but, um, overall, great year. Um, this was our first year back working with the village, and so we did kind of have some, some first-year pieces of trying to get everything from the prior auditor, but I think it went very smooth, um, and we're really looking forward to continuing our relationship with the Village of Sleepy Hollow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything? Anything else? If not, I believe your evening is done.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. Have a fantastic rest of your evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Pick this up once again when we get back to that part of the agenda. Uh, okay, president's report. Gone through the remote attendance, the gubernatorial proclamation's been extended. I didn't love that. I'm going to be able to say gubernatorial proclamation. Kind of makes you want to reach for the Kleenex. Okay, uh, the next item is more of an FYI, and that is the Rutland Dundee Annual Food Drive. It is Santa and the sleigh through the village.
Uh, that's right.
There is a schedule that has been published. They start December first, I believe it is, next Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, and they will be going through the various parts of the village. Uh, we do have it on the website. And I can tell you, the west side of Sleepy Hollow is the third at three o'clock. East side, I can't remember. It's the first and second. It's the day, or it might even be the day after. So, but it's on the website. It's coming up. It's next weekend. And you know the drill. You'll hear the siren. Go outside with your goodies. Slay will come by and take it off from your hands for you and move on down the road. Uh, that is it for the president's report this evening. Thorpe's report? I have no report tonight. Thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning, no report this evening. Attorney's report, no report this evening. The engineer sent us an update. The hatching is supposed to have started again today. And, huh? No patching yet this morning? Okay. Maybe tomorrow or Tuesday. But fortunately, the weather's gone the other way. Last week, it didn't look like we might ever see the patching completed at that time. Hopefully, by Wednesday, we will have all that done, and the two thousand twenty-two road project will be done. Uh, finance, director of finance, Mr. Van.
First item, I'd like to, uh, request a motion for, for warrants on a one hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Diatley to approve the warrants of November twenty-first, and the amount, um, one hundred and seventeen thousand. One hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Are there any additions, deletions, questions, or comments?
When we see the comment entries, like, there's one like seven-nine Willow, eight-eleven Locust. What do, what do those mean?
Those are, um, street, streetlights or, or balloons or something like that.
There's actually, yeah, there's a, some pumps in both the water meter pumps too, which is, I think, the expensive one around the road is, yeah, quite a bit current.
But, yeah, a lot of those are, uh, electrical lights that we have throughout the village that we pay for. Any other questions? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Mr. Thorndyke.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion. So pass it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Second item is I'd like, uh, to request approval, or motion for the approval of your, um, two thousand twenty-two annual financial report.
AKA the audit.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Nemec, seconded by Diatley to accept the financial audit of the two thousand twenty-one, as presented by Lauderbach and Alman. Comments, questions, or discussion? Well, I'm going to echo Courtney's thanks to Eugene for the work he's done on the audit this year. It was his second rodeo this time, but at least now he knows this one was, you know, all his doings. So, uh, he's got the handle on it now. Okay, there'll be no other comments or discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thorndyke.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion. So pass it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, I just wanted to mention that it was actually far easier working with Lauderbach and Alman this year than it was working with the other audit firm the last year. Um, you know, there were no surprises with Lauderbach and Alman, where I was constantly surprised with, well, I have everything. Well, no, I, I want more. I want more. I know, it's so it was unending. Um, but it wa, I think I'm gonna switch the, the order of this and, uh, talk about the furnace. Um, the police furnace has been limping along for some time now. It was supposed to have been replaced last year, and we didn't do it. We had, I think it was nine thousand dollars in the capital points budget to do it, and it didn't happen. Um, and we ended up in September putting in eighteen hundred dollars to keep the thing going. And then in two thousand twenty, we had, uh, another six hundred and fifty-five dollars. So I, I believe it's, it's past its, its prime, and just based on last week, um, I think we're better off trying to replace it sooner rather than later. Um, our normal, um, person that we usually use and has, who has been servicing the, uh, the unit is, um, Elgin Sheet Metal. Um, Wendy had contacted them, and they were the ones who originally gave us a bid for about nine thousand. Well, now that it's gone up to twelve thousand, six hundred. Um, what they're doing is they're, they're giving us two, um, units, two ninety thousand P T U units, and then, um, the, uh, coil, but they are not replacing the condenser. The condenser was replaced in two thousand thirteen, so it's already like nine years old. But that was for their twelve thousand, six hundred. Um, Wendy contacted another, uh, company, and, um, they wouldn't even give a bid. They said that, uh, Elgin, um, fabricates their own materials, and they could not compete with them on, on price. Um, so she happened to do a little bit of research, and she found this T D H mechanical. With T D H mechanical, um, they're willing to put in a, um, hundred and twenty thousand P T U furnace, uh, plus a condenser and the coil for ten thousand, five hundred. Okay, so significant savings, and we would have, um, newer units. Um, you know, so my question, the fact that, you know, it's, these are smaller than what the other one with, uh, Elgin was putting in. But, uh, my experience, from what I have been told, is a problem when you put in a larger unit, is it cycles more? Because it, um, brings it up to that temperature real quick and then shuts off, and especially with air conditioning. It, uh, when it shuts off, then you're not getting rid of the humidity in the air, when if you have a smaller, a slightly smaller unit or whatever, it continually draws out that there's a humidity in the air. Um, I had not said anything to Wendy, and I was shocked when she gave me this, um, this vote, because, um, if, you know, she had asked me, I would have suggested she would have contacted them, because in the past five years, I have used them three different times to to put in entire units. Uh, and they were always lower than the competition. Uh, the first time I had used them, uh, using for heating and air conditioning in the house, and, um, after the first summer, the, um, air coil developed a leak. They came out right away, fixed it, and didn't charge me at all for anything. Uh, they've been extremely responsive. Um, this past summer, um, I had them not only put in, um, the gas force unit, I had also one ductwork and everything like that. And I had contacted a couple of other companies. They wouldn't even try to do that during the summer. They said, call me back in September or October. So they have been extremely responsive. Um, I even had referred them to, um, a friend of mine who was sold by another company that she needed a whole new system. They came out, looked at it, and says, no, all you need is this hundred dollar part. So, um, you know, if, if I had a recommendation, I would go with, with this T D H mechanical.
And the only question I have is that you said this is an eighty percent, and the ones from Elgin sheet metal was, was a higher efficiency in different, different unit?
No, it's about eighty percent.
Oh, I thought you said nine hundred, ninety something.
No, no, it's, it's a, they're, they're ninety thousand, two ninety thousand P T U.
That's, okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be a hundred and eighty pound P T U.
So, so it is like, it's apples to apples?
Yes.
But I know the last time we got bid, it was like apples, oranges, and cranberries. So this is, so we're, but I had it, yes.
Yeah, and, and the guy who did this bid, it was the guy who actually said, oh, my last, you know, the last insulation, and they were right on target.
The only question I have is that Steve, you know more about this idea. What's the electrical that we have out there now? Do you have that?
Well, I don't know about the police.
The, the police is the one you have it on. Is the police side, isn't that the, the dual phase or triple phase or something?
We had, uh, triple fl, phase electricity wired to the, this side.
I thought the other side was the same way too, as I have to.
I don't know. It's.
I, I don't.
But I guess my question is, are we placing with standard household type equipment as opposed to anything industrial or worse? That, I guess that would be why the question, yeah, yes.
They said that the, uh, for this type of a setup, you know, we did not need a
That's whatever, when I was, the building trustee, everybody went in there, tell me, I'm kind of worked, they're like, yeah, this is designed for a small warehouse. Why did they put this in here? And it was always cost, it's more run it and repair it and everything else. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Oh, I had, no, yeah, it was, it's.
Wow.
Does this satisfy the bid process?
No, we'd have to vote to do it. We'd have two-thirds vote.
Yeah, no, we've got three bids.
But the one
One refused to, to go.
Okay, we can still just do it a two-thirds vote on the same thing. That's probably, yeah.
Yeah, well, we had three. Elgin quoted, and then one guy says, no, if they're, I'm not gonna have him and these guys. So there's your three bids. You know, if we had two-thirds of the vote, then.
Doesn't, yeah.
You know, we've had a long history with Elgin Sheet Metal, but this is business.
Yeah, right. I, I agree. Um, I can tell you from my experience, I work in the industry, um, T D H is a very good company. They're very well-known. This proposal is a very fair proposal. Uh, the price is a very good price.
There we go. So we have a motion? Accept the, uh,
I make a motion, we accept the T D H's bid for ten thousand, five hundred dollars for a new, uh, heating and air conditioning system for the police side.
Second.
Moved by Diatley, seconded by Harney to approve the bid from T D H Mechanical for a new heating cooling system for the police side of the administrative building, costing a ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
No, they say how, how soon they could, uh, um, they, they usually do it pretty quick.
Okay, no other questions or comments?
Wendy seems to have done a good job of this.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Thorndyke.
Aye.
Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Mr. Prano.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion. So pass it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sam, you can thank me January.
I will.
I'm checking the finance.
Yeah.
I was gonna request a fireplace.
Ooh. Okay. The last item I have is the R F P for the refuse collector. Um, we kind of got caught blindsided. It, you know, the contract expires on December thirty-first, and this process should have started back in June, but, um, uh, I, I dropped the ball. You know, so, um, we put out the R F P. I then contacted, um, each of the major, um, companies, Blood Brothers, Republic, um, Lake Shore Recycling, Group Waste Management, and, you know, I sent on the R F P as well as posting it online. We got back two proposals. Now, I had a conversation with, um, Mark Schuster, our attorney. Uh, part of the problem is that both of the proposals ask for deviations and exclusions of the, um, or exceptions, deviations and exceptions. And he says that because of the deviations and exceptions, that it's not an acceptable bid. That because of the R F P, they need to say that this is it. Um, so it is, and because both of them have the exceptions, that both of them should be rejected. However, we can then choose one of them and move forward. Um, what had happened is that the R F P was the one that had been used back in two thousand thirteen. Um, after that, they had rewritten the contract for the conditions. Well, when I went and was updating the contract, you know, today, I could see that a lot of the stuff that they're having in the exceptions are, is already in the contract. So what should have happened is that our F P should have been revised to make it closer to what the contract had been. So what Mark says that we can do is reject and pick one of them, uh, subject to a, um, a mutual agreement on a contract. However, we have to have this done before January first. So we have a very tight timeline. Um, in your package, you had the two bits. Waste manage would only go out five years. Group gave us a seven-year price. So when you compare the price, the five-year to five-year price between Group and Waste Management, Waste Management is a little bit cheaper by under a dollar. When you do the seven-year price compared to Waste Management's five-year price, we're talking about three or four cents difference. Where Waste Management is three cents cheaper. However, what is in Waste Management's, um, exception list is a diesel fuel uh, surcharge, so that if the price of diesel gas goes up, they can add a cost recovery to the prices that they're charging. So even though they're coming in low today, if the diesel prices continue to escalate, they have the right to, to change those prices. That is not the situation with Group, which uses the, uh, was it the compressed natural gas type trucks, so they're not subject to the, the fluctuation in the diesel market. Um, other than that, a lot of the other stuff was all the same thing. So my recommendation would be to go to, go with Group for the seven-year uh, contract, to see if we can come across, or in a mutually acceptable seven-year contract with them.
So we have a motion from the board to instruct the staff to enter negotiations. Instruct the staff to enter negotiations with group. Uh disposal for a contract that will match their proposal.
So.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Deatley to authorize staff to. Conduct negotiations with group in regards to obtaining a contract. Similar to the proposal that they submitted. For waste removal from the village of Sleepy Hollow or seven year period. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
I just think it's a very smart move because the diesel thing could end up to be quite a bit of money. And uh that's not something we want to be surprised with um as we move forward.
Well, I I'd also say that based on that, this is the first time I've been on the board and most of those companies that Eugene just mentioned have provided service. And this is the first time I sat in a seat when we're just providing the service. That we've not had people in the audience coming in complaining about any number of things, so. And even when I was environmental trustee, we had group there, I. You know, a few times I had residents call or complain, they were, you know, customer support and otherwise was right on it, so they they have been remarkably reliable. Providing good service, so.
All right, since we are dealing with the contract and it will have a final financial amplification, roll call once again. Mister Nibbick.
Hi.
Mister Brando.
Hi.
Mister Natalie.
All right.
Mister Harding.
All right.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes and no negative options, so pass this, thank you all.
I I will say that um it's part of our treasurer's group, we we talked about this issue because. You know, they were facing a similar type situation and then they had mentioned in Spring Grove had root. And um went to Blood Brothers for a lower price and they had nothing but complaints where they didn't have these complaints with group. So um I I think that overall group was the the best choice. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you Eugene. Uh comments from the public, Mister English.
Good evening, uh I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to the board's attention as well as hopefully the viewing public. Uh first is a week from Saturday, December third, Service Club is hosting its Holiday in the Hollow. And we'll be down at Seventino Park at four o'clock, I'll be lighting the trees. Have a visit from Santa, we giving out hot chocolate, cookies and candy canes. And we are asking that people that attend, if they could to also bring some canned goods for us to be able to donate to the food pantry. We're not trying to compete with the fire department, just it always happens each year, we always overlap, but. Any food dump donations that can be made would be greatly appreciated. The second thing is something that the Service Club is working on, we didn't get into the newsletter, that is. We're in the process of trying to reclaim the community garden, which obviously went to weed during the COVID years. Uh one of the things that we knew was a problem in the past was that the soil in that area. Like much of the soil around here is very hard to work. So we are also in the process of constructing fifteen to twenty raised boxes. In which to fill with workable soil and handles off the ground, they're about two thirds the size of your tabletops. And that way will be less weeding and a lot easier on the back. Question?
I can take it if you want, but go ahead.
We've got to have a little bit of an issue.
Yes.
With the beds.
Which is what we had in the past. And floodway, so.
That's why we were thinking of raised boxes, we're gonna have like cinder blocks.
Yeah, that's the issue, that's you're building in the flood plain, so the issue, we actually had soil trucked into the past. The engineer, it it can be done, but there's mitigation that has to be done, I believe it's. Two for one, three for one, that has to remove someplace else the flood. And it's very visible, we we've gotten geeked from the. The what is the power is it be the that regulate the flood plains and floodways?
I D N R.
We author, I mean, the engineer probably can, because he's gone through this all before, he knows all the numbers and we're talking about, yeah, there is an issue, it's flood plain and floodway, so you can't.
Hey, so who should I contact?
Uh we'll have to talk with Jeff Foster.
That can be done, it just it just can't.
It's it's.
Got to be incorrect, correctly.
Okay, well, I know some of my friends that are gardeners ordered their seeds right after Christmas, so I wanted to give them a heads up, but. Uh hopefully we can work it out and get the garden going together.
That was part of the problem, it's very south end of it will flood. My lower third. As I said, it's a floodway, structures in there. I just before somebody started yanking on my sleeve, I thought I'd let you know.
Okay.
You know, we can work with you on it, as Joe said, there are ways to get there. We just don't want to, you know, start working on it and then to have one of those guys drive by and say, hey. Give us a stopper quarter and.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, we don't know when these guys drive through. Uh you know, every once in a while, we'll get a list of problem areas. Uh they've named dinged us on uh our uh mulch pile.
Cause that was that was issue was recognized before and that was.
Oh. Sam, do you want to have a a word real quick?
Sure, um so I'm excited, so by now I've just emailed the PDF of the newsletter to all of you, sorry about the delay. But you know, like we said in the email, it's never been something that requires just a formal thing, so if you just want to email us with any feedback in the next couple of days. Otherwise, we'll just have that sent out by the first of December, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. I didn't mean to cut you off. Construction of a floodway and I just.
Just a follow up question, would the Service Club need a permit to build anything?
What's that?
Does the Service Club need a permit to build anything to.
Yep.
On village property?
It's not so much that we're building it, it's uh the builder gets, he works for a company that produces video games and they get their glass. And they create, and that's what we're gonna build or use as planters, we're not building them, we're just drilling holes in them so the water will drain out. Bring them out, that's our plan.
We'll see.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, on to trustee reports, roads and parks, Mister Harding.
Uh just a follow up question. To the flight in uh the engineers report, it's been a frustrating summer. For road repairs in the village and frustrating for everybody that's involved. And that stems back to the availability of hot asphalt. It was delayed due to the strike in the. But the way the system is worked is the contractor with his best guess. Gives when things are going to be done in the village to the village engineer who then passes it on to the trustee. Who then passes it on to the uh residents and there's been several deadlines that. Haven't been that exactly as proposed and. Uh just to note, no doubt, the engineering company for the village and the contractors doing the best they can with a changing situation. Uh they had hoped to be here today, I didn't see evidence of that, let's keep our fingers crossed. That uh they'll show up tomorrow, patching is the only thing that needs to be done, but uh let's hope we get that done before the bad weather sets in. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, they're. They were marketing cutting. Okay. Kind of locust. That us?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, there are. Okay, and I saw some trucks over on Willow too, is that?
Good, they did, they did show up today, all right. Well, they're working hard to get it done in the next few days.
Okay, thank you Ed, uh finance, Mister Hoffman is not with us this evening. Uh water and sewer, Joe.
I know.
Thank you, Joe. Police and public safety.
Uh I have no report tonight, Chief, you have a. Um just to bring up the speed on the uh part taken, I interviewed the one candidate today, uh we've got a background started on him. Our detective is gonna get that done for me, uh I gave him a deadline to get it done. Uh I'm gonna continue trying to get a second person, the two that we that I was trying to to go forward with are not ready now. They will be for a future slot, but not not right now, so I'll keep working on seeing if I can get the second one, but we'll look like we have at least one and he'll be able to. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you Steve. Uh building environment, Mister Thor.
No report.
Thank you, Mark, building and zoning, Mister Brando.
No report, sir.
Thank you, Anthony. Okay. I thought we'd stuck a fork in twenty twenty two dash eleven. We uh we're back to twenty twenty two dash eleven, our minor. Update. Uh we have the late fee needed to be modified. In this and somehow we missed it last two or three times around. Uh so this evening, we need to go back to twenty two, twenty twenty two dash eleven one more time. And take care of this uh last little red. Find it here real quick. Page ninety two. One, ninety two.
Oh, we got it, all right.
You have a highlighter?
Yes.
Okay, what we're looking at is a change on section three. In it, it states a late fee equal to the amount of the initial fee for any motor vehicle license. Shall be charged to the following person. What we're proposing is that we strike equal to the amount of the initial fee for any motor vehicle license. And the sentence will then end simply as a late fee shall be charged to the following persons. Okay? We have a motion, solid, approved, change. Moved by Harding, seconded by Deatley to accept the change in section three of twenty twenty two dash eleven. Any comments, questions or discussion? Smart move. Roll call, please. Mister Nibbick.
Hi.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Mister Harding.
Right.
Mister Natalie.
Hi.
Mister Brando.
Hi.
Thank you, one and all. No, I haven't I haven't lived with that ordinance for a long time. I was gonna be tattooed on, so. Well, okay, uh the next one, uh ordinance twenty two dash thirteen, we will leave until uh December. Catch that uh next time around, so that takes us to new business. New business, uh we've got a request to waive our. Uh solicitors permit program for the Girl Scout organization. So that they may conduct their cookie sales. I believe their cookie sales are running December something to January something now.
December fourteenth to January twenty eighth, yeah.
So, uh. Do we want to charge the Girl Scouts a hundred dollars per function per week? No.
Hey, you need the money.
Okay, so we will give the Girl Scouts a pass on the permit requirements from December fourteenth through January twenty eighth. I do believe they gave us a second set of dates in which they will be distributing.
Can we just. Waive the fee for twenty twenty three, is that the the Girl Scouts?
Yeah, twenty twenty two.
Can we do that for both? I move that we waive the soliciting fees for the uh it's Girl Scouts of America for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Sure. Second.
Okay, move dynamic seconded by Thorn to waive all solicitation fees of the Girl Scouts of America. For the year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty. Any further comments, questions or discussion? Being none, roll uh all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carries, thank you, one and all. And then the last item we have got is the calendar for the physical or for the calendar year twenty three. We uh want to take a look at it and have a motion to so approve.
There's actually a question on July third, July fifth, we should probably clarify that.
Yeah, it had to be the third.
Yeah, we do Mondays, any, yeah, I won't be around, so I shouldn't. I think in the past, we go on the Monday unless it's a holiday, so.
Well. I'm being told that we don't have to vote on this tonight, if you want to think about it and come back on the uh fifth.
Fourth is a Tuesday, Tuesday, so the third is a Monday, so it'd be a day before, we've done that.
We've done that in the past.
We've done that in the past, yes.
Was there gonna be uh this um what is July issue coming up, is that the uh. Sixty fifth year, the village and the fifteenth year of the Service Club.
Yeah.
So there may be activity on the third. Last year, the fireworks were.
That's Monday night though, so I would think they would do it on the weekend, wouldn't they?
Well, that's true too.
We have not secured a firework vendor yet. But I can't answer that.
I think the fifth just makes it pass the ho- preparation for a holiday, you guys are around doing something or whatever than the day before.
Yeah, I agree with Anthony, people might be out of town, let's just settle it. They go up.
Yeah, consensus moved to Wednesday the fifth.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Scratch July from the third to the fifth. Any other changes? Uh we have a motion to so approve the meeting dates for the calendar year twenty twenty three as presented. With the amendment of the change from July third to July fifth.
So move Deatley. Second, Brando.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Brando to accept the or to establish the dates for the calendar year twenty twenty three. For the board trustee meetings as presented. Any further comments, questions or discussion? There being none, roll call please. No, not roll call, I'm sorry. Also use the roll calls. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, eyes have it, no negative votes, motion so carries, thank you all. Uh. See, any other new business come before the board?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.